The Arts Commission of the Council is now in session. Will the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Potem Rarick.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
And I apologize, I forgot to write a list of the Arts Commissioners.
We're here. We're all here.
We're here. Thank you.
Title? We have a quorum. Okay. Michael, you want to lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Make yourself at home.
It's your council chambers after all. Okay, we are... that's the approval of the agenda. Any objection to the agenda? If not, so ordered. Public comment. This is a time for the public to address the council of the commission on topics not listed on the agenda, providing information and input of things you think we should know. Okay, no takers. We'll go to the... we are on the discussion items. I'm going to let Michael kind of take it from here.
Okay. Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to meet with the council. We have some good things to talk about, I think, tonight. I want to start off with a presentation by Commissioner Balderman, who has, I must say, been working like a warhorse Trojan. I can't even think of the appropriate metaphor, but has been working so hard and so effectively as the project manager for our first book, Fine Architecture in Ojai. And Bobby, if you would take it from there, please.
James, how do I get it to start?
So it is up, and you'll just have to hit the down button.
Oh, there it is. Duh. Okay. Well, as you all know, this project has been going on for well over a year. Took at least over a year to gather up all the photography... oh, yeah, I'm on. To gather all the photography for it. And I do want to start out by saying how much we appreciate the support the council has given us on this project. And we couldn't have done it without you. But I'm excited to tell you that we are going to be going to print within the next two weeks. And we will have it ready for the museum's event that they're having there and the show that they're having that's called Star architects: Ojai by Design. And it just so happens, if you can look on the screen, you see the cover of the book, and our book is called Ojai by Design: Fine Architecture of the Ojai Valley. And it's by Craig Walker, who has been so wonderful writing this book and doing research. And our editor, Mark Lewis, has done a phenomenal job. And we've had a lot of support. Susan Addison helped us by proofing it. And it's... to see it all come together is really exciting. And so I thought I would just show you how close we are to finish. Now, what's missing in this version that you see here are the captions, and there's some other little tweaking that we have to do, but that's it. Other than, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's, we're good to go. So let me just give you a preview of what we've got. So... Well, and this is just the usual, you know. But here's our introduction. It's 80 pages long, by the way. Here's our first property, which of course was the old Presbyterian church, which, as you recognize, Byron Katie now occupies this property.
Hang on, that wasn't not the Presbyterian church?
Oh, yeah. No, no. What hap... oh, this is the older version. Okay. This is supposed to be...
Maybe it was.
No, 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 this was... this was originally... I'm sorry, you got me confused for a minute there. There are two Presbyterian churches in Ojai. Believe it or not, this was originally the very first one.
Whoa.
Yes. This was the first Presbyterian church. We will come across the second Presbyterian church as we move forward.
That was moved from across the street, wasn't it?
You know, I don't know.
So the Presbyterian... the one you just showed, that was moved to that location?
Oh, wow. Now, here we have the Pierpont Gin Restaurant... Restaurant Residence. Unfortunately, we were unable to photograph this, and so we had to deal with an old photograph and some drawings we found. We tried everything to find photography, and this was the best we could do. So this is actually the only property in the entire book that we didn't have original photography on.
Does it still exist?
Yes, yes, yes. But the gentleman who lives there does not want us photographing it. So we did not have permission, so we just...
Good heavens.
Worked... did a workaround. And here we have the Libby Residence.
Oh, wow.
I'm going fairly fast because I realize we have a lot of other reports to do.
We should add, by the way, that Carlos Grasso is the graphic designer for this project, who did all of this beautiful layout.
Yeah, yeah. And this now is the Pratt Residence. And you might recognize the property as the one that we chose for the cover. And what we tried to do is always have one exterior beauty shot and then several interior shots when they were available. And we managed to get quite a few. Here we have Thatcher School Administration Building and the Cole Residence. And then we have Mead and Requas Downtown Ojai. And that's... we have several properties. We have, of course, the post office tower. We have the arcade. And I want to point out, we were very fortunate to have support of many different photographers who were so willing to provide photography. Some charges very minimal cost. I mean, like, 100 bucks, 175. Then we did have to hire one photographer to do the... fill in the gaps where we were missing, and that was Don Rosa. But these two pieces, that's from Phil Harvey on the left and Leo Braun on the right.
Did you plan to have the rain on the streets so you'd have the reflection?
Well, yeah, we didn't want it...
Perfect.
We didn't want everyone to think there's always a drought in Ojai.
We consulted with Stuart about that, with his television experience.
Yeah, and of course...
I trust you, Stuart.
Of course, we include... we included the museum.
Where's the gates?
There's a blank cage in the back.
Right, who said that?
Have you got $8,000? I'll turn them over.
Moving on.
Okay. So here's another property, the George Washington Spec House. Libby Stables, which was originally a stable and converted into this incredible home. I'm trying to go fast here for everybody. This is Villanova. The Crotone Institute. And on the left, that's the music room. The right is the outside of the library. And then these are archival photographs that were provided by Crotone.
Oh, it's beautiful. It's a gorgeous library.
Beautiful.
Of the library. And then, of course, Matilaha, which was originally the original Nordoff High School.
I used to go there a lot. I probably will.
And Acacia Lodge.
What's that?
That's over in Miners Oaks. It's over there on Lamita.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Cross from elementary school.
Yeah. And this is more of that. The Ford Estate. Now, here we have the older Presbyterian church. But you see, there were two... so there were two Presbyterian churches.
There's the gates.
Yeah, they're different gates. Anyway, here is another residence. But if you notice the different styles of architecture, we represent a lot of different styles.
It's very nice. Just beautiful.
And that's the Krishnamurti. And here we have the Wiley Residence. These photos I got through the Getty Institute. So you can see, we got photos wherever we could. As I said, gathering the photos was the biggest task. Miners Oaks Elementary School. And they're known for the windows, the very unique window design they had in this school. This is more that I... a Neutra property, the Moore Residence. This was also through the Getty Institute where the photos. And the Walker Residence, this is the author's father. That's where he was raised, in this home. Let's see, what am I doing here? And so you see here, we have a mid-century modern.
Modern, modern.
Yeah. Pine Cottage.
Very interesting.
Meditation Mount.
Of course, yeah.
And that's it.
Good stuff we have on that beauty here, huh?
Um, we could... we only could fit so many of the Mead and Requas... you know, we had to kind of pick and choose. So nothing personal against City Hall. But one thing we are going to be doing in summation is we hope to have a launch party. And hopefully, it'll be in conjunction with the museum event that they're having. And we'll certainly let you know. But again, thank everybody for support, so that's it.
Just one other note. As Bobby said, Craig Walker wrote the text, and it reads beautifully, and it is so full of information. So the book is not only beautiful, but just as a historical reference about Ojai and what has been created in Ojai. It's a fine piece of work. One of the things that we're debating now on the Arts Commission, I wouldn't say debating, but discussing, is where do we go next? You know, what subject do we choose next? The one idea that's been kicked around is perhaps pottery and ceramics, with Beatrice Wood and...
Otto Reina.
Otto Reina and RTK tile and many other...
We're going Tumash.
And going back to the Tumash, exactly. So that might be where we go next. But as we develop these ideas, we'll bring them forward to you as we have further information. One of the things that we also need to add is that, of course, all of the sale receipts from the book will come back to the city. So that will help reimburse the cost that's been, dare I say, eked out over the past couple of years. Okay, any questions or any other comments about that project?
Just stunning.
Okay.
Incredibly beautiful.
Yeah.
We will move on to the mentor program next. And Stuart, I've asked to... who is on and has been very active with Bobby Balderman in mentoring the mentor program. I asked Stuart to review this evening what we achieved in this past summer.
It was great. It was great for the students and I think equally great for the mentors. They really enjoyed it. And seeing them come together at the end in this room was really stimulating because they fed off each other and they were influenced by each other. And I mean, the mentees influenced the mentors, too. The program is in its sixth year, bringing working artists together from all disciplines: painting, sculpture, theater, fashion design, multimedia, together with high school students, mostly this year, I think, all from Nordoff, I think. The program requires 50-hour working relationship over the summer. The student must create some art with the mentor and report it and exhibit it here at City Hall. The student will then receive a $500 fee from the commission at the end of the summer, so that covers some of their expenses and so forth. This 2017 summer yielded some terrific work in the arts of drama, glass sculpture, drawing, and multimedia, except for the acting job one mentee did. The work of the artist was displayed here in the City Gallery. The artists for the 2017 Summer Artist/Student Mentor Program were, and this is Christine Kirsten Hoy, she's an actress. And she was under the direction of John Maderos, who's a magnificent actor and director. His show, Animal Crackers, opens Friday, I think, at the Art Center. Is that right?
Twenty-fourth.
Yeah. And she performed three monologues from Aeschilles, Chekhov, and Shakespeare, which was stunning. I mean stunning, wasn't it, folks?
Yes, it was.
The next artist is Jose Torres. This is not Jose, this is the person he drew. He's a... he draws and he uses charcoal and pencil. And he is mentored by Amy Lynn Stevenson, whose work is not at all like this. And it was interesting to see them adapt to each other and learn from each other, and really learning each... both ways. It was terrific. The next one is Sarah Avdeef. She was a glass sculptor and worked with the prestigious Stephen Edwards, who was new to Ojai. He was on the faculty of Alfred University, a very prestigious college, especially in glass making. It's right near Corning in New York, which is, you know, the glass capital of New York State, anyway. And they had a wonderful work together. And it was with glass and ceramic and all kinds of different things that they explored together. And that's Sarah there. Esri Hartley, the last one. She studied with Ojai studio artist Vera Long and created the large figurative mural. You can see that there on the top right. And that's a picture of Esri there. And she also created something in tie dye, which you don't think of as a medium for artists, but why not? And she created this long strip of... like of a scarf, wasn't it? A banner, yeah. Of silk. And you don't see it here, but that was another thing that she and Vera worked together with. Vera is a multimedia artist, so she doesn't... she gets impatient with certain media and moves on to something else. And that was great for Esri to see. So it was a marvelous summer for them. I think we all got stimulated by the experience of seeing them come together with their mentors. And part of the funding for the Artist/Mentor Program comes from the Ojai Educational Foundation. The Arts Commission thanks City Hall and City Council for the support of this marvelous program, and we thank you very much.
The support of the Ojai Education Foundation comes in a check each year for covering the costs of one mentor and one mentee, which is to say $1,250. Because Stuart didn't mention, but the mentors each get a $750 stipend as well to cover their expenses. At this juncture, I unfortunately have to jump to a glitch, and that is that when we submitted our budget request for this coming year, inadvertently it was submitted for $3,000. We caught that, and James submitted an addendum, which I think got buried in your budget packet. The request should have been for $5,000, and it really was, one might almost say, a typographical error. So we will be requesting formally an increase of $2,000 to take us back to the level of $5,000 that we've had since the inception of the program, so that we can, with the help of the Education Foundation, engage five pairs in the summer of 2018. We had five online for this year, ready to go. And David Baker, the photographer, unfortunately fell, broke his hip, I believe it was, or his leg, and was simply unable to enter into the project. So that student unfortunately missed out as well. But we will be contacting the artists in the Ojai community again in January, February. Last year, we had twice as many artists apply as we had places for. The Education Foundation will continue to offer their support and be engaged with us. And we then go out to the schools, into all the schools. The only stipulation is that the students must be residents of Ojai, which is to say boarding students are not being supported by Ojai tax dollars, to put it bluntly. But if they are a day student at Thatcher or Ojai Valley School or any of the other schools in the area, that's quite permissible. And we have had students from those schools. So once again, come spring, we'll be bringing those pairs together and setting off on another summer experience for them with a show here in the council chambers then in the fall.
And at the museum.
And at the museum, yes. That is, of course, one of the breakthroughs we've made in the past year, is this coordination and conjunction with the museum. There's now, as you know, a dedicated space in the museum. When you go in to that first room where there are the historical exhibits, if you turn to your left, there's a large alcove on your left, but there's a smaller alcove on your right. And that is where there is a permanent floating exhibition of art from the City Collection. So we're now a part of what is going on at the museum in a regular way and getting great support. With that in mind, I'll return to the subject of the request we made for $12,000 for the necessary rolling rack for the art collection in the controlled climate storage at the museum. The city was not able to come forward with that money. I've been in contact with Wendy Barker, the executive director at the museum, and she thinks that she might have a source for half of that amount. She hopes she does. We are looking at our budget and are trying to cobble together how we might squeeze $6,000, or if necessary, $9,000, out of our budget. That would entail not buying more work for the City Collection this year because that's where we'd have to take the money from. So as we move forward with Wendy Barker on that, we'll keep you posted. And should the city develop comfort with income levels and so on and be able to contribute to that... It's not an idle request. The whole reason for moving over there was to get the city's collection of art out of the attic, out of closets, into controlled storage. But to have it... them leaning against each other on the wall in there really defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. So we hope we can make that happen.
Mayor, Michael, can you refresh us on when you made that request for $12,000?
That was in our last budget request, for this coming year's budget, yeah.
And we declined to provide the funding for it.
Yeah. So that's what we're struggling with. And it's just where we are.
I just don't recall having a discussion on a line item of that nature. That's... I just can't remember us having it... breaking it out and actually identifying what the need and why the need is so important.
Yeah. So that's where we are. Okay, well, now we can... I'm sorry, Linda, you have a sore throat, and you were scheduled to talk about that.
That's... I just... the only thing I would like to add is I really feel like the program is working so well with the museum. Every exhibit that we have here at, and our City Gallery now, has a representation at the museum. And we have signage that ties the two exhibits together. All our PR and all our Facebook and all that is going out and it kind of reinforcing the idea that we're a community of artists and that the museum and the city are strong in their support for the arts. And everybody knows the budgets are tight. The museum's budget is tight. They have a lot of volunteers on their staff, just like we have volunteers on our staff. So we all understand how tight the money is. But one of the problems is we can't set aside money and build the coffer up to buy this rack. We have to spend the money in one amount to get it. You can't buy half a rack. You have to buy the whole thing. And it's a capital improvement. It's a professional rack. And it's something I really feel like we need to do to preserve our art. And I, for one, am more than happy not to buy art this year because I think it's foolish to buy more art when we don't have a place to store what we have properly. So that's my two cents.
Linda, maybe describe how big this thing is. Because it's huge.
It's a professional rolling rack. It's like... and all the major museums use. Our museum, for the size of our town, I have to say, is amazing. I mean, I've been to galleries and museums across the United States, and we have a very high caliber space. I don't know if anybody went to the Dennis Shives Exhibitions up there. They did a talk, they're doing town talks. Wendy has done a lot to grow attendance at the museum and brought... bring people in. And I just think it's great. It's great for the city. It's just... it's a win-win, as far as I'm concerned. But it's a giant rolling rack that's probably from that wall to probably the edge of this. And it's all metal.
It's big, yeah.
And it has a... oh, well, no, not the other case has a winding... they have boxes also that store. But the rack itself makes it easy for you to walk back there. You can move the rack apart and hang on both sides of the grill work. So it's not a cheap thing.
No.
It has to be ordered from specialists that do it. And it was researched.
Linda?
Yeah.
What's the capacity of the rack?
The capacity? Well, depends on...
How many pieces?
Well, it depends on the size, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Like, if we got the rack tomorrow, how much of the rack would we use up? In other words, is this something that was going to last Ojai for 20 years, 30 years, as we accumulate more?
It's kind of hard to say how long it's going to last. I mean, I went over there and with Wendy's help, we've... we worked the racks so that we've tried to get a lot of the pieces already up. I mean, some of them aren't up, but they're wrapped. And took down some things she had up there, the museum, historical things, that could be stored in flat and re... so it's like a jigsaw puzzle. So it's kind of hard to say, but...
And we are working with the museum closely, as Linda just said. So, you know, integrating the two collections. And I know the museum is seriously considering deaccessioning some things that really don't have historical importance, that they're going to pass on, to open up a little more space.
And I do want to say that we're benefiting as a city using their program, on their computer program, to build an archive of our work. When they're accessioned into the program, which is taking a while because I'm doing it, doing the city pieces, not the museum pieces. There's places for all the background on the pieces, the artist, the date. Anything you'd want to know about this piece of artwork is going to be in a computer file that we'll be able to access at any time. So it's pretty amazing. We didn't have anything like that. We...
No, it's a big...
It was in a closet.
It's a big, big step forward for the City Collection.
Wonderful.
So questions or comments about that before we move on?
Well, just a quick question, James, Steve, and focus on you because Michael directed it to you. When do you anticipate coming back on this budget ad弥 issue to council?
So one of the discussions we had was about... we're planning on coming back with the mid-year budget update this year, probably January, I think, was what we had tentatively scheduled it. And so including it in that mid-year discussion.
That would be an opportunity to just redo the whole budgetized issue.
That's correct.
Also, when we do that, could you provide more information on this rack? Can you give us some background and some costs and some things of that nature so that we can actually look at that at the same time?
Yeah, I think we could probably get copies of the sales brochures and stuff from the manufacturer's website, as well as information on costs and delivery dates and things like that.
We already have this, so...
Yeah, okay. Well, now, another subject that is dear to our heart because, again, just as Linda has poured her energies into this museum project, working with Christine Beern and others, the Public Art Program that is massive in its demands has been chaired by Christine Golden with Marcy Toshner alongside of her. I'm also on that committee. And as you all know, it's a major part of what we do. And we think we're about to move into a whole new arena. So Christine, do you want to take it from there, please?
I do, and I'm sorry that I didn't realize that the agenda didn't say anything about grants. And with your permission, could I take 30 seconds to talk about grants?
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay. Because I prepared that. Okay. So it really is 30 seconds. I just want to let you know that this Thursday is when we're going to be awarding the grants. And we had 12 applications this year. And the total amount of requests came to $55,883, which I think is a record for the amount of money. And we have $25,000 that you've given us, thank you very much, to distribute. And we have everything you could think of in these grants: the Ojai Pops Orchestra, the Youth Opera Company. We have a proposal to increase performances for seniors in nursing facilities, as well as a couple of proposals that will increase art opportunities for students in schools. So it was a real record year for proposals, and we're going to be hard at work Thursday, figuring out how to make $25,000 fit $55,833 of grant requests. So I just wanted to mention that. And then I feel very embarrassed. I have no idea what these items are on the Public Art Committee discussion, the Sculpture Park on City Land and the murals. Michael, you must know about this.
I just like the idea of Christine being speechless.
Yeah.
I didn't.
She didn't say she was speechless. She just said she had no idea what she was going to talk about.
I think this was to keep me from talking about the Public Art Fund.
Not so, not so. But it doesn't work, does it? We have discussed this, and I thought you would have looked at the agenda and seen it.
I did, and I have no idea what you have in mind.
We've talked about the idea of leasing City Land either to the foundation and having a public sculpture garden on City Land. And that's something we want to explore with the Carolyn Basco Foundation, which is relatively new in town, but which was founded in honor of the mother of the women who have put it together.
Sister.
Sister, I'm sorry. And the honoree had had, I think one could say, international reputation as an art dealer. And many of the artists that she worked with have volunteered to donate sculpture. And so they want to explore the possibility of leasing a piece of City Land, which they would undertake to maintain... of city land, which they would undertake to maintain and ensure. And that would be a home for a sculpture collection here in Ojai. But the other idea that Christine is beginning to investigate is the possibility of a sculpture park with rotating elements of sculpture. So, that and then the mural.
So, that's, that's what you were, okay. All right. I can take it from there then.
Yeah, I think so.
We, we actually have five ideas on the table and we're going to hopefully get more ideas in these five. One of those ideas is the possibility of a rotating sculpture park. Another one is looking at the side of the theater building, which has its own little issues attached to it. We've also had a proposal come to us, which is a new thing for a proposal to come in this fashion to us. But we did get a proposal for doing a statue of Edmund Libby and Renquah to put in Libby Park. That's something that we feel we have to at least look at what that proposal is. There's been a proposal to expand the sound element of Libby Bowl and put up peace bells. So, these are all public art proposals that we're looking at because we're bound to spend, see, I'm going to get to talk about it anyway. We're bound to spend public art fund monies in this manner. Those monies are, do not come from the city. They're not city monies. They're put there by developers for the express purpose of the community selecting a public art project. Now, we're a little short those funds, $8,000. But that's okay. I won't bring that up.
I don't think you want to.
You guys together.
Really. Now, I also.
That would be city money.
As long as you get your gates.
It's not city money. It's not. Not city money. But I also can report to you that I have met with the Becker Art Consultant that they hired and that the, that was approved. That public art project was approved. And it's going to be some beautiful benches that are going to be configured by Martha Moran, Ojai's rock stacker. And we think that it'll be very placemaking, the way they're going to be nestled in around the different pathways in that.
Christine, is that Mallory Court you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, you know what, Linda? I'm not sure it's Mallory Court. I call it.
Cottage is among the flowers.
Oh, that one.
Yeah, it's cottage is among the flowers. They haven't started Mallory Court yet.
Oh, okay.
And the other project that I've had just a preliminary, very preliminary conversation with the head of development of that is the property that used to be the old Ojai Olive Mill. And the planning commission, and we don't agree with the planning commission doing this, but they did sort of give a direction that they wanted some sort of art project that would show that this used to be an olive mill. And the developers are right on board with that. And they have an idea for that. I can't tell you much more than that because it hasn't gone to Kappa yet. But that should be coming our way pretty rapidly. And then the last one, of course, is the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa Barn Project. And the valuation has been completed. And they would now be able to move forward with an art consultant and a design. And so, we'll be having a few Kappa meetings. And I, I also want to say one more thing. And that is hats off to James Vega, who is pretty brand new to this process. And I have kept him working with emails and phone calls and meetings and whatever. And he just never, his energy is tireless. His goodwill is tireless. And his kindness is just, what a great hire.
You're here.
So, thank you, James Vega, for being our art liaison. He's been spectacular.
Yeah, big step. Footsteps, step.
Okay. Well, I think that covers the items that we had on our agenda. Yeah. Bill?
Follow-up question on the kind of footprint or area. Any sense of that for either the leasing to the foundation or the rotating idea? What kind of square footage, et cetera?
Not really.
I was just going to say, I, I know this, I don't know, we haven't talked about this to the commission lately. But once before, when we were talking about when Barbara Hirsch was on the committee, we spoke about doing something with the back garden here. It's already, you know, it's a beautiful back garden. Just gorgeous. My son was married back there. I mean, it cleaned up gorgeous. And it always had, already has the basics. It has a pond. It has a covered arbor. I mean, it's just gorgeous. It would make a beautiful sculpture park. And it would be right next to City Hall.
Yeah.
And the police station, which is never bad.
Yeah.
But that's, that's an area that we're going to be exploring and paying a lot of attention to in this coming year.
Yeah. I think it, you know, there's probably only going to be one project that we're able to select with the amount of funding that we have. And I didn't mention another one that we're looking at, which is a lot of interest in because it would involve a lot of artists in town, not just one. And that is, and you may have seen this in Ventura and other little cities around California or big cities. And that is to paint utility boxes and turn them into pieces of art. And some of them are quite spectacular. So, we're also going to be looking at that. And so, your question, Bill, would only come to us if that's the project we chose to do.
If I could offer another thought?
Please.
Interestingly enough, the city of Ventura has partnered with their Rotary Club to develop the Botanic Garden area behind City Hall. And it's really kind of taking off in terms of support from the community and contributions through the Rotary Partnership. I've actually pitched this idea to our Rotary in terms of a garden development. A sculpture thing would dovetail perfectly. I hate to say it that way. It's still pedestrian, sculpture thing. I apologize. But, you know, the sculpture integrated, system integrated into the garden area would, I, I'm just thinking that there's just, you know, there's some ideas here we ought to integrate. And there might be a way of, of, of including this as a service project with one of our services.
That would be terrific. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Good, good, good.
Good idea.
I have a question, Christine. You, when you mentioned the Ojai Valley Inn project or the barn, how is that going to work as far as public art? Is that going to be within their campus?
Yes, it is. The actual barn itself that used to, that was on Creek Road, I guess it was condemned. And so, they've.
You said it was prohibited by the county.
Yeah, right. So, what they've done is they found an area between two of the greens. I forget what they told me, which of the two.
Eighteenth green.
The two holes. It's close to where the spa facility is. I do know that. But I have had a couple of conversations now with Alex Kim about that. I've gone over the handbook with him. What we were waiting on was the valuation because we really wanted to, we don't have any authority over what the CDD defies, decides the valuation is. But we wanted to give it a look. We wanted to look, see. And it took a little time to get that. But now that we have it, go ahead.
My question was more directed towards public art within a private campus rather than visible to the general community.
Oh, it's considered public because anybody can go there.
Right.
So, one of the things that we'll be looking at when we review it is, and I've talked about this with Alex Kim, is that whatever they decide to do has to be visible eight hours a day to, from the public right of way. So, for example, we have a piece over there by Pamela Grau, which is in the entry facility.
Was there any conversation about mitigation fees or whatever you call it, where there's a deposit made for the public art fund that would be more public than internal?
I'm not sure if I'm following you.
I'm following him because I've brought this up before.
Yeah, okay. Way to go, Linda. Great minds.
I have a problem with it. And it's been, ever since I've been on the board. Because one of their projects was, was to develop an herb garden. And I'm thinking, that's fantastic. It's a great idea. But it's also at the Ojai Valley Inn. And the entrance to the inn, this is my personal opinion, the entrance to the inn has a guard at it. And you are discouraged from driving down that unless you are, you know, eating there or playing golf there or, I mean, the employees aren't even supposed to go up there. So, I have a little bit of problem with getting them paying for public art on a property that they are discouraging the public from coming to. And it is my personal opinion, but I have been raising it for years. So, thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah. Well, my thought was is that if I owned, it was the Crown family, I'd say, wait a minute, we're improving our own property and we internally have to put something here? Why can't we put what we want to put here in, as a matter of our own personal taste? And the answer usually is, this is public art. So, that's one of the reasons if someone isn't, the project's not big enough to create public art, they'd make a payment, I assume, to the fund. And that it would be an opportunity, maybe as an alternative, to have them make a payment to the fund. That would give you more money to.
Yes, I think what's important here is to understand the purpose of the ordinance and the meaning of the ordinance. And this particular part of the ordinance we're talking about is meant to encourage private development, to erect public art as part of what they're doing. So, it's not public, public art. For example, Libby Bowl was public, public art, the shrimp and sculpture. Libby Park, the lizard, that was public, public art. But this is private development, public art. And so, all of the private development, we can't go in and ask them to put up public art unless we have an ordinance. And that's what the ordinance is about. It's so that private development will have public art as part of its, part of its building, part of its ethic. And yes, it does add value to what they're doing. But that's okay. It also adds value for the public. For anybody that goes there, the inn is open to all of the public. It adds value. And it's absolutely legitimate for them to do it as long as it's visible, eight hours a day from the public right of way.
Did you write the section of the, of the code?
Pardon me?
Were you part of the?
Yes, very much so. It, it, you know, I've studied the ordinance now for several years.
No, I asked you if you wrote this, you know, it sounds like.
No, I had, did nothing to do with writing the ordinance.
So, this language is an interpretation? Is that what I'm understanding from you?
Oh, I don't know that it's interpretation. I mean, you can look at it yourself. It's what it says.
Well, that's right.
It's private development, public art.
I just came back from Lake Oswego last month. And they have a public arts program. And almost everything that, when I went to City Hall, it was all public art out in the public view, even though on private property, as opposed to being internal to, say, a college campus or something. It's only, you know, I guess you and I are a minority view, maybe. But it just seemed like there was an opportunity here, money versus project. And if the project's going to be, I won't say buried, not at the Ojai Valley Inn, although it's getting pretty intensely developed up there. And it is isolated.
And another consideration when you're talking about a waiver is that when that waiver comes to us, we are bound to do a piece of public art that really accomplishes what would have been accomplished had the developer done a piece of public art, which puts a tremendous burden on the city. Like, we're going to move forward now and we're going to do a piece of public art because we have two waivers from last, the last couple of years. But that's going to have, put a lot of burden on staff because we can't do that by ourselves. It really takes personnel and time and effort on the part of city. So, I would never discourage private developers from doing a piece of public art in, on their development. I think the ordinance is very healthy, the way it's written. When you do Sarzati Park over there, that would be a place where it would be the city running a piece of public art. You know, I talked to Greg Grant one day and I said, what took you more time?
Or to be a piece of city land that could be made available for public art that might be paid for out of the waivers in the Ojai Valley Inn.
No, you, you also have to do the 2%.
We could, right.
The city also gives 2% for the arts. So, the money comes from the city.
Well, I think the issue is that right now there is a limitation by virtue of the way the ordinance is written that allows developers, as Christine has said, to choose to do the public art on their property as long as it's visible to the public eight hours a day. That's the way the ordinance is written. Now, certainly, if the art commission wanted to propose a change to the ordinance, or if the city council wanted to change the ordinance and discuss that, that's a possibility. But I don't think we're going to resolve the issue here at this meeting.
Right.
And just one point, too, is the inn actually hasn't presented their project to the full, to Kappa or the Arts Commission at this point. So, it is a little preliminary to have this discussion. They'll present it. And that issue's been raised already as far as, is it going to be available to the public for eight hours a day? Or are they going to close it for events? So, there's, there's a lot of things that still need to be worked out before that goes forward. So.
Just one clarification.
Randy?
After listening to James, I had a sense that he might think that the art has to be presented on the site that's being developed. Whereas, I would think the Ojai Valley Inn has, what, 160, 180 acres? That they should be able to present their art anywhere on that 180 acres, as long as it's open to public viewing for eight hours out of the day.
Actually, they cannot do that, according to the ordinance, without applying for a waiver. They can apply for a waiver to erect the art in a place on their property other than the exact location of where this development is happening.
Thank you for the clarification.
But they have to apply for a waiver. They can't automatically decide to do that.
Well, I appreciate that. I was, I assumed.
Well, so it is possible.
It is possible, providing they do, they go through the waiver.
They go through this.
Providing that the waiver is, is granted, which it has to be vetted by the public art committee, that waiver. There'd have to be just cause to grant the waiver.
Just, just to fully correct everything, the procedure is the recommendation comes from Kappa to the Arts Commission. And then the Arts Commission, but all waivers end up being approved by council, I believe.
Yes, that's right. All waivers have to come back to city council.
True.
At the recommendation of the Arts Commission.
Okay. That's what we have.
It's complicated.
To present to you this evening. We're open to any questions or comments. Steve?
If I may, just wanted to just address council and the members of the commission regarding the budget request and the rack. My recommendation to council was to not increase the total amount of funding that was going to the Arts Commission from the previous year. So, that was why in my recommendation to council, I did not recommend the additional funding. But just to be very clear, my concern wasn't that I had any objection with the rack or the use of the rack or anything like that. It was just simply to try to toe the line in terms of keeping those budgets at the levels that they were the previous year. So, that, so that was why my recommendation was as it was. So, in other words, if the commission would have perhaps had a different recommendation and included the rack, but still kept it within that funding amount as the previous year, I would have had no problem recommending that. I just wanted to make that, Matt, clear here. I don't have any.
You're not a rackaphobe.
I have no, no rackophobia. No.
Thank you.
Right. Also, just a very quick note, I, I was the liaison to the Arts Commission. I know Commissioner Harmon and Golden were on as well at that time when we were doing the rotating sculpture program in Arcade Plaza. And again, I, I know you know that we had some issues with that. So, I would just remind folks of some of the concerns that we had there to make sure that we don't repeat those mistakes if we try to do that again. So, and then I was just, we've already had a lot of comments on the waiver process. But yet there is always an, always an option to the private developer if they want to not do the art onsite and to get that requirement waived and pay the in lieu fee. And correct, that needs to go all the way through all those processes, as the mayor pro temp described. And ultimately, would need to be approved by the council. So, I just wanted to bring a little clarity on that. Thank you.
Linda?
And I just want to clarify also on the, on the rack, I know it's a large chunk of money. But the way our budget is built, we cannot save it from year to year. So, we can't ask for less than $12,000. So, I didn't see any other way of going about it. So.
Anything else? Say if you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Meeting stands adjourned.